Okay, thank you. We'll bring the meeting to order a little bit early at 6:59. My goodness. Uh-oh, unreal. New record. And our first matter this evening is a public hearing. This is a public hearing for the Westchester Pavers LLC, 60 Millwood Partners LLC. This is an application for a site development plan amendment for change of use approval, 60 Millwood Road. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Yep. Yep, perhaps you can just bring us up to speed with the application, where you are, et cetera.
Would it be useful for me to put up the drawings?
Absolutely, absolutely. You'll need to introduce yourself, of course, to the audience.
Hello, my name is Michael Gallin. I'm the architect representing the applicant in this matter. We're here speaking about 60 Millwood Road and I don't know what the normal protocol on the board is for public, for this board in terms of public hearings. Did you want me to run through the entire project or should we give the...
Just a quick synopsis of where we are and like an executive summary for the public.
So the application is for putting Delamba Masonry slash Westchester Pavers. It's the same business. They previously were under the name Delamba Masonry. They currently operate under the name Westchester Pavers into the old firehouse at 60 Millwood Road. There was a previous application at this site for an all-star woodworking that went through a long approval process and ended up not being able to move forward mostly because of time constraints. This application is better in my mind for several reasons, including no exterior garbage and just less impact in general because there's not fabrication on-site. In terms of where we are since we last met, we had the opportunity to meet with the engineer from the town and we had a productive meeting and incorporated the comments from that meeting. There are a few minor logistical things that we still need to, or hurdles we need to jump through, including renewing the septic design and doing a final SWIP submission and making sure that that satisfies the town engineer. But in general, I think we are getting close to checking off all the boxes to moving the application forward.
And the changes from the last application that we saw and approved, could you just remark those for us? I think they're relatively modest.
So, the last application included a dumpster in this location. We've eliminated that dumpster. All the refuse will be stored inside. They don't generate a lot of trash, so that can be handled via cans and pulled out for pickup. There's a slight modification to the planting bed on the front of the building here to get all the plants outside the sightlines. One of the changes is that we are keeping the loading dock door in this location, but this door will be for limited access. The majority of the access will be through the back door and because we eliminated the dumpster, there's a little bit more room here to maneuver, so that works out well. That's the bulk of it, other than the nature of the operation.
And we have land banked parking in the back and I believe the lighting plan is identical to the last one?
Identical, yep.
And the back door that you will be generally using here, is that a new door? Is that going to be soundproofed or is it...
It's in the existing door, in the same location as the existing door. There won't be any fabrication going on inside the facility. It's just storage or scaffolding and other things.
Okay, so no cutting of stone or things like that?
No cutting of stones.
Okay.
Sabrina, are we maxed out right now in terms of what we can do in terms of the land banked parking spots? Because it seems, I think you've indicated, I think you only have 10 employees and only seven of which, seven of which are usually off-site, only three on-site. Seems like we have an awful lot of parking spaces still, even with the land banked ones here. Do we have the ability to increase the number of land banked spots?
I believe you can. I would want to redo those calculations. You do have thresholds in the codes. I can reexamine them and give you a definitive number if you wish to reduce them to the maximum potential.
Seems like that would be something appropriate here. It's overkill for what we have here.
And the question would be, is if you're already at the maximum reduction allowable based on the site, do they have authority to reduce it further without going to the zoning board?
Right, right.
There is also a bit of a cost concern since it's existing asphalt. We are already investing in pulling up, you know, substantial area of asphalt and planting trees and so on and so forth. I think there would be some concern with the owners, you know, how much more of that can we invest at this time, especially before they even start operating there and understand how everybody moves around. It's a little tight back here where in these spaces to get, you know, back out and stuff, so having a little extra room is not a bad thing.
Yeah, but still, I think it's, what do you have?
Eighteen.
Eighteen spots and most 10 employees, so it doesn't seem like the sort of thing that you're going to see retail customers come to visit.
They do.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
They do have visitors to the site.
Okay. This spot right here, is that handicapped or is it some sort of special spot?
No, the handicap spot is in this location over here.
If we remove this and put in more plantings here to break up that facade on that side of the wall, it seems like you have enough spaces. Would that be something that you would object to?
What is that right now? Is that pavement or is that...
The spot was generated, yeah, it's pavement. This is all paved right now, right up to the building. But yeah, we could, you'd actually eliminate some curbing, so there wouldn't be a cost concern. We'd actually have less curbing, so I don't think there'd be an objection with that.
Okay, we could put some planting in there.
We'd have less parking.
Is it a handicap spot right now?
No, the handicap spot's on the front.
Just one required.
Right. You know, I think, you know, I don't think that you are up against the maximum that you can reduce, so I think removing that space would be fine. I would want to check it to ensure it before...
Yes, of course, right. It just seems to me that you could perhaps break it up and have, you know, a tree there or something like that to break something.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
And it's sort of orphaned over here. It's kind of a, I agree.
It is, unless it was for the employee of the month or something.
It's not exactly a long walk, so I don't think it's critical.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Well, we have some memos, I guess. Sabrina, you want to run through your thoughts and comments?
Sure.
I think we have a comment also from Steve. He's not here tonight, but he had some quick things too, quick points.
Again, the applicant has gone through the changes that have been made. I just summarized them as they were differences between the site plan that you approved previously. There are, they've addressed most of my comments. I had a couple of comments, my comment number three regarding the limited access to that front door that they're leaving is that there, that a note be put on the plan indicating that it was limited use. Everything else has been addressed. The New York City Department of Environmental Protection requested a change to the EAF. You know, that should be put into the record as a change. You know, the Part Two and Part Three have been submitted for your review. The information that the DEP had been requesting regarding soil testing has already been addressed because they do have an approved septic system by the Westchester County Health Department, which required soil testing, and I believe that there's language in your resolution that indicates that. So that's just a point of note for you at this point. The, and then the site lighting. Do include a detail on the site plan regarding the lighting that is to be implemented. You said it was the same as the previous application.
We submitted the lighting plan with the cuts in the location, so I was confused by that.
Yeah, I didn't see them in our file, so.
And what temperature are you using for the bulbs?
Oh, boy, I have to blow this up a little bigger. Because it was whatever was approved last time, I actually didn't go back and modify it.
Probably what was 2,700, right?
I believe it's only 2,700. Whatever happens, do whatever temperature you prefer, so.
Okay.
But whatever you guys reviewed last time, that's going to be exact.
2,500, not to exceed 2,500? Okay, Kelvin.
You can see 2,500, sometimes 27 is standard, but rather if it could be 27, because it's a little easier for us to meet, but.
We prefer 2,500, which is where it'll probably be in the next year or two, so.
We're just ahead of the curve.
Okay.
So are you now.
I mean, as long as we can buy the fixtures, we'll do it.
Yeah, they're available.
Okay.
I have a question on, oh, go ahead, Sabrina.
No, that's pretty much all my comments. They've addressed everything that...
I have a question that I had before on another project is, have you checked to see if you're 1,500 feet away from a licensed daycare center? Which covers, 1,500 feet covers, you know, about a good portion of, you know, the built-up area in Millwood. I don't know where the daycare centers are, if any. There should be one or two.
Do you white me?
Well, it's under the impact on human health in the environmental...
In the EAF.
Yeah.
In the EAF.
Yeah. And so there's a report, is it, it's a question of, simply a question of doing the bookkeeping right. I don't think it has any impact on anything with the fact that you're not going to have a lot of air holes and you're not going to have a lot of noise and you're not going to have a lot of everything or anything.
The state now has a computer in her face that generates a lot of the answers for you, and I don't remember if that specific question was, we got from the state or not, but we can certainly look into it.
Yeah, take a look at it. It's on nine of 10, and I think then if there is one nearby, like in that little cluster of buildings right around you, I don't know what their use is right now. And then you just have to...
There's none there now.
None there?
There's none there now.
All right, so just...
Unless it's in the circumference of 1,500 in the neighborhood areas and private homes.
No, it wouldn't be the private, I don't think it's the private.
Closest one is 420 Quakerhead Road, according to the internet.
Okay, pardon me?
Yeah, that's not...
420 Quakerhead Road would be the closest one, according to Google.
That's not close by. Okay, well, we found that in downtown, or uptown Chappaqua, that there was one that was well within 1,500 feet, wasn't on the system, so. You could just do that, and then there's an explanation you have to write, and I don't think there's anything else other than that.
Sabrina, you had mentioned in your memo that the DOT needed to be re-notified about the change in the use on this project. Has that all been taken care of and has there been any response from the DOT?
They have been sent all of your information. We have received no response from them.
Do we need to see a response from them?
Not before you make a decision.
Okay.
With your, one of the requirements is a DOT permit, so that's a whole separate...
Process. It is a condition of your resolution.
Okay, Bob, you had some comments?
Yes, keep in mind, all these comments have been put into the resolution. I'll read them real quickly anyway. Obviously, they're proposing to keep the garage door. I feel comfortable with that as long as we put the notes on the plan, which hopefully can be enforced. That's number one. Number two, they evidently are over the 5,000 square foot threshold, so they have to apply for DEC to get the SWIP for erosion controls only. Number three pertains to that basically, how to prepare the erosion control plan, which is basically just silts as well. Four, like you stated previously, the Westchester County Department Health Department has expired. It's more of a formality to renew it. I have the wrong date. It should be 9/20/2017. That's when it expired. Five is DEC permit. Six, they have to provide obviously a land bank agreement, whatever the planning board and Sabrina determines on what the land bank parking spaces are. That's number six. And because this is commercial, they have to provide an engineer's estimate to determine the 3% inspection fee. And like Sheila said and Sabrina said previously, obviously they have to get a work permit from the state, do the work within a right-of-way of Millwood Road, and that's it. And all these items that haven't been completed have been put into the resolution as well.
Okay, great, thank you. We have the memo from Steve Coleman.
Correct.
He mentions the change in the type of spruce trees at the recommendation of DCP and...
Satisfaction with the...
Yep. So I think at this point, no additional trees will be required for the clearing of the pine and the other ones that are proposed to be planted, so. First time I've ever seen Steve say this, my final review. It's always preliminary.
Been a while since you've said the word "final."
Been a while since I've seen a final, okay. Good to see, anyway. Good. Any other comments, questions from the...
I have a small request on drawings. I'm an engineer, I'm not an architect, so I like bar diagrams for distances. You know, like scale one sixteenth inch equals one inch or one foot. What happens is that when they get reproduced, the Xerox machines are not true. And so like there's, you know, there's usually like a 2% error.
Sure.
Thank you. I'm an architect.
Don't scale the drawings. Pay attention to the...
The drawings say, "Don't scale off drawings."
Don't scale the drawings.
I'm an architect, not an engineer. We don't care about scale. Just make it look good. Except when you get your fee and you want to weigh it and make sure it's the right amount.
So I actually have a couple of comments. Here actually, just essentially one rather, I think, major one. I'd like to go back to the question of the retaining the existing roll-up door on the south side of the building. We put a, we came up with some language about this, restrictions, which are actually not very restrictive because it allows the tenant to essentially decide whether they are going to use it or not, depending on the convenience of their operation on a day-to-day basis. So I actually think that there's no point in us putting this kind of language into the resolution if it actually has no effect, because we're not going to monitor that. But there's a larger question here. This is a purpose-built, a purpose-built building from, when McKinley was president, this thing has been around for quite a long time. As a fire station. And a fire station is one of the few purpose-built buildings that has a drive-through base. And even the new fire station doesn't have one, new Millwood Fire Station doesn't have one. There, I was trying to think if there were any other commercial operations that actually require a drive-through, other than maybe a car wash, a drive-through facility. So if we were concerned about or are concerned about the use of the front door, I think it'd be good to review what our concerns are, because if we do have concerns about that, it might be a functional concern about traffic, attorney movements and so on and so forth. It might be a neighborhood impact concern because the suggestion here is that they will be allowed to move materials in and out of the building. And it, from what I understand, the materials would be moving, or rock and, I mean, it's big, heavy stuff, I'm guessing. I think I'm right about that. You're not moving that by hand, you're moving it by a forklift or a front-end loader or something, and you're probably transferring it to go to a job site somewhere, or you're bringing it in from a supplier, so you're transferring it to a truck to go to a job site. And those activities, it occurs to me, are likely to happen in the front of the building if we allow that door to remain as something that can be used. The previous application had that wall, that door removed and had a solid wall there. So I think it would be good to review what our concerns are about this that caused us to put some restrictive language in the draft resolution and to then ask the client what the real necessity is of having that, not the client, sorry, the applicant. It seems to me that it's just a matter of site management, and if the applicant was to go out and build a building for this purpose, I kind of doubt that the applicant would build two roll-up doors on opposite sides of the building. It's an expensive thing to do, it's not necessary, and so I can't understand what the functional requirement is, other than, well, gee, it's there, it'll make our life easier, so let's see if we can keep it. So I'd like to go through that conversation one last time and see where we come out on that.
My understanding, and it's just my understanding, maybe the applicant should really answer it, but is that the roll-up in the front would be used only, again, using the words from our resolution, logistically impractical for them to use the rear door, but for whatever reason, the front door would be easier, better. My understanding was that, looking through the materials, it was the strict, restricted turning radius here for getting a truck in the back, et cetera, and it might be easier in the front. But I think you raised a very good question. We should hear from the applicant on this.
Yeah, I mean, if appropriate, I'd like to, I have some thoughts. First thing, I just want a clarification. In terms of the heavy material, it's just the nature of the business, it's not practical to deliver that to this site, to stage it here and then to load it every day and bring it to a construction site. The way they operate, all the heavy material is delivered directly to the job site.
Okay, so what material are you moving in and out of?
It's pieces of scaffolding, it's bobcats, it's the mini little front loader, excavator type things.
Okay, so...
That are all going to be stored inside the building because we don't want to store it outside in the parking lot, so we want to be able to bring all that stuff inside. You might have planks for the scaffolding, that type of stuff. There may be some grout stored here that's left over, that sort of stuff.
That's heavy equipment. That's heavy equipment.
Yeah, sure.
And it's also a vehicle.
Yeah.
Those are all vehicles that'd be moving in and out of this other door, I'm guessing, this front door, on occasion, if you need to. Let me, I'm sorry, let me just complete my thought. In and out, and then you are transferring that to a trailer to take it to a job site. So if you're going to do that, if you're going to ask for the ability to do that out the front, then all that activity, a truck with a trailer backing up to that space in order to move the bobcat or whatever it might be, onto the trailer and to the job site. I wonder if we are opening the door, no pun intended, to a condition here which actually we aren't anticipating, and maybe we ought to think about it.
Yeah, now, I can understand your concern. I just would like you to consider that there's currently two large garage bases on both sides of the building, and they're both intended to be utilized for storage for their equipment. And the client or the applicant is closing off one of them, and if the only garage door to service all of this becomes this rear garage door, they anticipate that it will not function well for the business. Being, you know, if you imagine all of these in a rectangle and we had a second back door over here, maybe that could work, but the key is to have two ways out, so that you have some way to alleviate the pressure within that space. If you imagine a puzzle where you're trying to constantly move things away, there are times when you don't want to move four pieces of equipment to take something small out, in which case having that second way to open up the front door to take a piece of equipment out is critical for their operation.
That doesn't sound like it's critical, it just sounds a matter of convenience, so...
Well, but at a certain point...
It's really site management is what it is, right?
Well, but if the site does not operate efficiently enough, then why would they want to be there? It needs to operate in a way that makes it possible for them to run their business there in an efficient way.
Fair point. But that doesn't necessarily mean to us that that door ought to be operable and that we ought to be moving that kind of equipment in and out of that, of that building at the front of the building.
The board could absolutely determine that this use is not appropriate for this...
I didn't say that.
Building.
I just said that the door.
And what I'm telling you is that the door is critical for this use to be able to work there.
Well, that's your judgment.
Correct, I understood. As the applicant, that's what...
I don't know where to end up on this.
Because we've had these conversations extensively about eliminating the door, what the impact was, and the conclusion every time was, the site doesn't work for the applicant if we eliminate the door. I don't want to be wavering on this or anything else. They have to have that door for the site to work. If the board determines that this is not an appropriate location for this business, then that's a separate discussion, but they have to have the door.
That's your conclusion, that's not ours. We're not saying it's not, don't put that on us, that's, we're not saying that. And if we decide that that particular function shouldn't happen at the front door, which is the street side of this building, and it's not to suggest that your business doesn't belong here. That's not what we're saying.
Understood.
Okay.
But it's an existing building with constraints, so.
It's, I understand. So I don't know where to end up on this, but it's a fair question because I don't think that in my memory, we've really talked about what's really going to happen in and out of that door. And so for the first time, I'm beginning to understand it better and maybe it bears some discussion.
And I guess the one other thing that I would clarify is, the intention would be, you know, they have small dump trucks that fit in the parking spaces back here and potentially trailers, and all of that loading of trailers and moving of dump trucks and loading of those trucks would all happen in the back here. This is simply a relief point for the interior space to be able to get things in and out in those cases.
I have a couple of thoughts on it, I guess, that, you know, I feel that closing off the bigger bay gives us a scenic improvement. Also, from a, you know, from a fire safety point of view, relative to the value of the equipment, I would like to have two doors too, so that I could get my equipment out if there were a fire and I wouldn't have that additional loss. So I certainly understand your point, Tom, that it's, seems to be more of an occasional convenience, but, you know, I would feel comfortable with the way it's laid out.
I could see, I mean, I don't know, I don't know the operation. I think I understand basically how it works, but I could see a site management conclusion where that door is actually used more often than we think it might be, that maybe that becomes the door that the, these pieces of equipment that go to the job site, bobcats, front-end loaders, whatever they are, are actually parked there, and that's a dedicated door going in and out, and then other materials like scaffolding and so on and so forth go in and out of the other door. If I had two doors, that's probably how I would zone the operation, just to keep things, you know, clear and clean, just to make things simple. So either we care enough about this to actually tighten up on these restrictions that are in the draft resolution, or we don't care enough about it and remove this language altogether.
Well, if we keep this language in the resolution, and if there were a complaint coming in about the use of that front door, what would this clause enable the town to do as an enforcement issue?
We would go out and monitor the activity occurring at the front door.
But how would we, how would we decide for the, at that point, the tenant, how would we decide whether they need to use it or not? They would come back and say, "I'm sorry, this is our operation. We need to do it. It's inconvenient for us to do it any other way." You're going to, I don't know how you enforce something like that.
The resolution specifically says no trucks will maneuver into this door and the door will only be open as long as required to maneuver the material. So basically, what this resolution condition does is allows us to watch that front door and determine whether or not vehicles are being moved in and out of that door.
So no bobcat comes out.
I just heard something different.
That's, bobcat's a vehicle, right? So it wouldn't go out this way, so it'd be materials that come out.
Well, I, well, yeah, it is supposed to be materials, I think. The planning board will need to determine whether or not a bobcat is a vehicle. You know, are you making a distinction between an automobile as, or a truck being a vehicle versus a small...
It's not a lawnmower. It's something bigger than a lawnmower where somebody sits in it and drives it, in essence. And it has four, it has four, at least four wheels, and, you know, it has a motor.
So I think it would be helpful to hear from the applicant how the materials that they're anticipating to need that front roll-up door for, how that material is getting into the building. Is it on pallets, that you have a dolly moving it in, or are they using a forklift?
And where is it being moved from? Presumably it's being moved either from a delivery truck or to a delivery truck. Where is that activity happening?
That's happening in the back. The loading of trucks is happening in the back. The intention would be material and equipment would come out the front, and a bobcat would be a piece of equipment. So the intention was, if there was three pieces of equipment and a bunch of other stuff in the way back here, then the option would be either to move all that equipment out of the way or to be able to open the door for one minute, pull the bobcat around and close the door. I guess my question would be, is the board concerned about the door going up for 60 seconds, a bobcat coming out and the door getting closed again?
Well, I think your time is a little bit off, but why don't you use like five minutes or something?
Okay, five minutes.
And how many times a week? I mean, come on.
Once a day.
And what if you decide, well, you want to take the scaffolding out there, right? And where's, so you'd be taking, for example, the scaffolding, which is more than one trip probably, the scaffolding out the front and go around the back of the building to put it on a truck?
I think it's probably more, you know, again, some of this is logistics.
Probably put the truck right near the front door.
No, I think the scaffolding would probably be stacked in the back and the bobcat would be put in the front, because that would... No, I think the scaffolding would probably be stacked in the back, and the Bobcat would be put in the front, because that would make more sense. So the scaffolding would go out the back door, you'd load the scaffolding onto the truck. And the Bobcat, if the scaffolding's not there, would also go out the back, but if the scaffolding's all there, then it would go out the front.
I think that we're talking about hypotheticals, because once this thing gets tenanted and starts to get used, this building, it's going to, it's going to take on, it's going to take on its own life. And that's something that we either feel that we care enough about to actually monitor, and I kind of doubt that. My feeling is, I'm not sure the town wants to go out and monitor this situation.
We will only monitor if we get complaints.
I see, I would say that, for example, the first sentence, that we would take out the word "typically" and just say, "It will be kept closed unless," and then we go into the second sentence.
What page are you on? This occurs a couple of locations.
Resolution number four.
Phase four, it's.
Line 25. So typically, it doesn't help us at all, so I would take that out and just say, "Look, it will be closed unless," I mean, I think that's important too, because what we don't want is the door open, for example, in summertime because it's hot and this kind of stuff. And I think that's, I think that's part of Tom's objection too, or questioning.
I think it's probably better to look at the language on page six, item B5, because that's the note that would be added to the plans. So that's what the building department would be looking at in the event there was a complaint.
Well, we should use the same language in the same, in the bullet then. I would echo the same language then.
Are you okay with the language?
There is the statement that from, there is a statement from the applicant, "This door will be utilized only when it's impractical for material equipment to be moved within the interior to the rear roll-up door. It will open for short periods of time when needed and remain closed at all other times." That's pretty good language if we're gonna. But again, it's entirely up to the discretion of the.
Yeah.
And if, I suppose that if there are neighbors or people who care enough about this and notice that there's, appears to be a violation of this, who even knows that there's a violation of this, right? I mean, who's going to complain? I don't, I don't, I don't think anybody's going to complain about it.
Really?
My question is, well, perhaps they will. Well, you're here, okay, yes, the local neighbors will complain about it if it's a problem. But that's like four of you, right? I mean, this is a, I'm just not sure that this is something that, that if we're going to, if we're going to have language in here, we need to be prepared to enforce it. And we need to have language that is enforceable.
I think, I know about the, we have this language in here about no trucks will maneuver into this door. We've heard from the applicant that that might happen. I think what we don't want is to see a truck parked out there. First of all, it'll be blocking the handicap spot. We don't want that. And I think what it really goes down to is, if for a few minutes they need to get a truck there to get something out, they open the door for a little bit, and it's closed for the most part, you know, it's 24 hours and this thing is closed 23 hours and 47 minutes a day. It's, I don't have an issue with it. I mean, I just think it has to do with the use and the practicality of the use.
Jennifer, the language that Tom read off the applicant's letter, is that helpful, more helpful language?
I would have to hear it again.
Here.
Yeah, I think the second sentence, that it will, it will open for short periods of time when needed and remain closed at all other times. I think that helps define infrequently. I still think that maybe there should be some kind of more objective limitation put on, no more than once per day, twice per day, whatever is reasonable based on their operations and the considerations for the neighborhood. Just to put a more definitive bookend on it.
To that end, let me ask the applicant, what would be a reasonable number of times?
I think it would probably be better to put a time limit on it as opposed to a reasonable number of times if they lift it up.
Okay, what would be a reasonable time limit for the day?
20 minutes?
20 minutes for the day, half hour?
Half hour, 30 minutes?
30 minutes total for the day?
This is the problem, I think, with this kind of deal.
I understand the concern, but I also understand that on every application, an applicant comes in and describes the nature of their use, especially when their use is not boilerplate. And the board puts language in the resolution, and there's a bit of an honor agreement that what the applicant says they will do, they will actually do. And if they don't do it, there are mechanisms in place that allow for it to be policed and the applicant to be brought back in front of the board. I mean, we've been very consistent about the nature of this door. We're not trying to pull anything over your eyes or anything else.
Nobody said you were.
And I appreciate that you guys want to talk about it. I think that, if anything, this is probably the most applicable thing to speak about. But I think, we don't think it's going to be an impactful issue.
Yeah, and I think our concern is, I think my concern would be is that we just don't want, whatever it is that we're doing here, we just don't want it to be an abuse and start to spread into something different, and we want language.
I think the applicant brought up actually a good point about, maybe the planning board retains jurisdiction so that if there is an issue in the future, and we could define what issue is, that this particular provision of the site plan can be revisited.
I actually think that this is simpler if it's just binary. It's yes or no for me. I mean, it would be helpful for me if we just, where I started with this was to try and understand why we're concerned about this. What are we concerned about? Are we concerned about vehicles maneuvering in front of the building with traffic? Are we concerned about the aesthetics of it? Are we concerned about the community, the impact of it? Why are we concerned about it? And if we are concerned about it, then let's have the right language for that. I'm not sure that this language does it yet. I just don't know what we're concerned about.
One of my concerns, it was going to be continually used all the time and open that, when you have someone parking in a handicap aisle, ramping, coming around to the store, they might get hit by the vehicles if it's used all the time. But when they wrote this and they're saying they're going to use it on a limited basis, I felt that it was okay.
Okay, good.
I think it's a question of how the front of the building looks. That's an aesthetic issue. Certainly with one door remaining, it's not as good as it could possibly be. But certainly, it's better than it is now.
Right, originally, in the previous application, the intent was to try and improve that corner of the building that faced the road, you know, and, you know, with this application, they came in, the first time they were before you, and explained they wanted to keep that front door. They wanted to put the handicap parking space there, you know, they altered the vegetation a bit. But the intention was to create a formal curb along the street so that it defined the property. And there was actually a front of the building. If you look at the property now, it's pavement all around. So this is actually improving the aesthetic, given its location in the hamlet. So, so the, when they came to you at first and talked about that roll-up door and needing to leave that roll-up door, there was conversation by the board that it was kind of keeping the reminiscent firehouse, you know, versus the use and limiting it so that it wasn't an as-of-right, keeping that door open all the time, using it all the time due to Bob's concerns about the actual site distance and vehicle maneuvering in that area with the handicap space. You know, that seemed to calm the board in the sense of how it would be used. So I'm not sure where you stand today on that and whether or not you want to further restrict the limited use or define that limited use, but, you know, we were kind of, you know,
Right.
dancing around the issue.
So there's something else here, which is that it seems to me that, who knows what's going to happen in Millwood, right? It has potentially a future to turn into being more of a retail center, retail residential center, mixed-use center, which would be, I think, something which is on the town board's mind and is also, I think, within, in the master plan, objectives of the master plan. Right now, it's sort of six of one, half of a dozen of the other, mixed with industrial uses. The lumberyard, even though it's a retail use, the big trucks moving in and out, moving materials, so on and so forth. There's the crane operation in back. There's that kind of activity going there. There is the, what ended up being essentially a construction vehicle storage yard, unless I'm mistaken, on what I think is the Vesh property. And so there's sort of a mix of different kinds of activities. At the same time, we have residents living there on Station Road. We have residents living there on the other side of this property who have appeared to enter here tonight. And there is the potential for future of this, of the hamlet being more residential and more commercial. And to the extent that we encourage this kind of, maybe I'm wrong about this, but just a thought, to the extent that we encourage this kind of industrial activity at the front of the building, on the street, one of the main streets of Millwood, to that extent, it promotes the image of more of an industrial area rather than a residential one. I don't know to what extent that's going to have an influence on anything in the future, but that's a fact. And if that's something that we are concerned about, that's being raised right now, then maybe it's something that we ought to talk about. But I think that that's, that's a fact. People live here. And I think we want to encourage, I think the town wants to encourage people to think about Millwood in a different way. And I don't think that this, that this activity in front of this building promotes that.
Sure, please.
I actually feel that when it was a fire department, the doors were up more, and there was more activity going out in the front. I think this applicant's going to have less activity out front, and I think the door is going to be closed a lot more. I agree with everybody, there's no way to regulate it. Of ease, they probably will bring stuff in and out of that front door to make the, if my garage had a front door and a back door, I wouldn't have to take everything out of the garage to get the stuff in the back. I think we all experienced that. But we do, you know, there was a conversation about the charm of that building, the charm of connecting to the old firehouse and not taking it away because it was kind of a tie to the past. So, you know, it's a tough one. That spot has been vacant since the firehouse has left. This is a second potential tenant to fill a dark space in town, which would be nice to fill. I agree, I don't want to see that door open 24 hours a day and stuff going in and out. But I think the practicality of how they operate, it may be open 10 minutes in the morning when guys go out to the job, and 10 minutes at the end of the day when guys come back. And I think that's realistic, and I think it's appropriate for the way this guy operates. So I have no problem with the door, but I do think there needs to be some limit that's not subjective about how long they can go in and out that front. And maybe there's a period in the morning for 10, 15 minutes, and a period in the afternoon for 10, 15 minutes so they can get their equipment in and out as needed.
How much time?
Or luck, or whatever, and if there's an issue, there's enough neighbors around that can pick up the phone and call, and then we have mechanisms in the town board to address it. I agree with the architect's statement that there is an honor code between applicants and boards, and people kind of have to stand by their word. And I think we need to give them the benefit of the doubt before we speculate that they won't.
With that comment, maybe the applicant can talk about how they envision utilizing that door on a daily basis.
I had a question before we get to that, just for Bob, actually. Do you have any concerns, Bob, with vehicles coming in and out of this area, larger vehicles? I mean, you know, 14-foot trucks?
It was, okay. The amount of vehicle and the size of the vehicle.
Right.
But if it's going to be limited to small vehicles on a limited time, I felt it was okay to pursue that and leave it open.
I mean, one of the things that we could just say is, you could open the door, use it to maneuver stuff in and out and that kind of stuff, but there won't be any loading, unloading, or trucks there. And if you have to do the trucks, they have to be in the rear. Because if that is a concern for you because of the site lines and all the other problems that we've had with this site, those that seem to be valid.
If we're going to possibly, based on Sabrina's research, if they can land make more spots, why not use the, why not relocate the handicap to the side?
To this one.
And then that would.
Isn't there an elevational change?
Yeah, they do a sit-out to get in.
Yeah, there is an elevational change between both sides of those buildings, that that entrance is the only entrance will get them to the usable office space, I believe.
Yeah.
Is that true?
Yeah, there is, correct. This is a better entrance in terms of accessibility.
Yeah.
Which is why that handicap space is there.
But if you do take the Bobcat out that door, and you do have a trailer there, the nose of the truck is probably sticking out into sand.
That cannot be used for normal-sized vehicle access.
Let's get that in the paper.
Yeah, well, let's hear from the applicant as to how they envision needing that door open.
First of all, let me clarify, his operation, the size of the trucks is limited. He does, it's not tractor-trailers. These are not giant excavators that don't fit in a 10-foot tall door. These are not big 25, 30-foot trailers that you have to pull things up on. Little Bobcats that, they look almost more like toys than, I mean, a little the size of your equipment, but they're not, it's not giant equipment. So the notion that we're going to have a big tractor-trailer or a axle dump truck or something pulling up here.
No, you have a pickup truck.
Nobody suggested that.
We could have a pickup truck.
And that could be about 35 feet long by the time you're done, between the trailer and the pickup truck.
I don't think there's an issue keeping the trailers in the back, correct? There's no issue keeping the trailers in the back. I don't think saying that there will never be a pickup truck that pulls up here because somebody wants to take something out of the door, I mean, it would be difficult to enforce. We don't have a.
If it's pickup trucks, those frames, those car frames fit in a typical space.
Like a dump body, like a dump body truck?
No, it's bigger than a typical resident.
It's not going to be like a tri-axle dump truck.
F-150, we're talking about a bigger truck than that.
Just a pickup truck.
Yeah, like the trucks that you'll see all the landscape companies driving around.
F-150s.
Right.
Does that fit in a normal space, or is that okay?
Yeah, they fit in a normal space.
Okay, so if we limit the size of the truck, then I'm happy.
That's a good point. Why don't they put some description of the types of vehicles they can use or could use?
We already, in the description, talked about all the vehicles fitting in a standard-sized parking space.
Okay, let's go, we'll put that in the resolution.
So the trailers, I mean, obviously, the trailer and that vehicle don't fit in the same space. We put the trailer in one.
So it would be helpful, I happen to be doing an addition on my property, and I've got guys, terrific guys, they are putting a patio. They also did the foundation work. You guys do foundation work? Or you just do paving?
Do you ever do foundation work?
I mean, if they build a retaining wall, then sure, they're putting in foundations.
Putting in foundations. So you're probably hauling material off your client's site to, like waste material? Taken off-site, like excess soil, rocks? Right, so the trucks you're using are not typical sort of, are they bigger than a residential, than a typical sort of F-150, F-250?
Yeah, they're more like a landscape company would have with.
Right, like the guys who, right.
But they're not a big dump truck. They're not like a dump truck that you get 10 yards of gravel in. If you ever need something like that, that's owned by somebody else, delivered directly to.
Just try to understand the size of the equipment.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm still lost on it. I mean, I think that if we have a handicap space there and it's a normal handicap space, then the trucks that you would be pulling into there wouldn't fit in that space.
Correct.
Okay, so they wouldn't be bigger and go on the grass or in the plants or anything like that? Because why would you do that? All right, so if we can define what those truck sizes are.
We have to find the types of vehicles that you think would be used. So if you get complaints, we can see, okay, it's a bigger truck, it's not on there. This is not good, that's a violation.
I mean, to me, the simplest thing to do would be to say that it fits in the standard-sized parking space, because then you have a limited length and width, so if you want something more specific than that, we.
Time out. Your cover note says, "No trucks will enter or leave through this opening as noted on P-100."
Right, you just said that.
So why don't we just leave it that way? There'll be no trucks in the front loading, unloading. If you need to open it to maneuver stuff around, walk it around, get a Bobcat out. You guys are asking, I don't know why, our language is not as tight, this is what Tom caught. Our language is not as tight as what the applicant has told us, told us that they're not going to be trucks entering or leaving through the opening as noted.
It says, "No trucks will maneuver into this door, and the door will only be open as long as required to."
Yeah, so this is no trucks.
No, it's no, no. It says, "No trucks will maneuver into this door."
That's different than saying that.
Into is different for.
No trucks will enter or leave through this opening.
Right, but that's not talking to that opening.
Was that opening, is that the door opening, or is it the opening here onto the street?
The door opening.
I think we have, I think we have to go to a, that, no trucks bigger than the space that is used for the handicap parking, that fine?
Well, that's fine, but it's, it's, the truck might be a concern for traffic and maneuvering and so on and so forth, but there's the other concern, which is the activity of what the truck represents, which is loading and unloading vehicles and materials in the front of the building. So that was more my concern.
I see.
I got to say, Mr. Curley and the board and. I gotta say, Mr. Curley and the Board General, I still don't understand what the actual concern is. I'm telling you that there's very limited usage, there's no intention to turn this into an industrial site. We've gone in the letter and said the door will be closed most of the time, because I agree, if that door was left open for three hours a day and you were looking into a warehouse full of scaffolding, that would be inappropriate. The door should be closed. But I don't think there's a concern with opening the door for 10 minutes and take a bobcat out and closing the door.
Okay, so, no, but we, we never, nobody ever said you're gonna have the door open for three hours. I think we accept the fact that you'll only have it open and close for the time it takes to move the material out. My concern, I'll say it again, my concern is the activity in front of the building because I think you just said that yes, there will be trucks pulling up to the front of the building. I, maybe I misunderstood, but I think you said there will be trucks pulled up in front of the building and ordered to transfer equipment onto the truck to move to the job site. And that's the activity that I'm concerned about.
It will never be activity in front of the building that's not associated with lifting up the door and closing the door. So if...
What's, so what's that mean, associated with?
There's not gonna be a truck there and a guy mixing concrete in front of the building or doing work in front of the building. If somebody pulls up a pickup truck and then rolls up the door and puts some scaffolding in the pickup truck, that would be associated with opening the door and closing the door and then he moves the truck. He's not gonna leave it there or anything else.
Okay, so that's what I thought you meant by associated.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And your concern...
That's not gonna end up in any resolution, I know that word won't end up in any resolution.
So you could say that there should be no loading or unloading in front of the building except for vehicles of a certain size, a vehicle that would, and only during the times when the, the door is being opened during those infrequent periods.
To me, the size of the vehicle doesn't matter, it's the activity that matters. I mean, and this is only my concern, it doesn't have to be anybody else's concern, but I just want to be sure that, that my concern is understood and that's my concern.
Or just say no loading and unloading. And they have to carry the materials to the back.
Well, they can do that around the set back of the building.
Let me ask you a question.
It depends on how they've cluttered up the, the inside for a short period of time until they can get it uncluttered by using both doors to, you know, reorient everything.
If they want to pull, like if they want, this is getting crazy, I, I admit that. If they want to pull a bobcat out that front door because they can't manage the inside of this building to keep that back door open, I don't know, I don't understand that, but if they want that right to do it, fine. Drive the bobcat around the building and load it on the trailer behind the building. If they want to take scaffolding out, I guess they're taking it out by hand, right? And putting it on a truck, do that in the back of the building. I mean, I, I just, this is, we're, we're, we're actually essentially giving carte blanche to the, and I, I don't mean to be hard on this applicant and this future tenant. We want businesses in Millwood, clearly. But it seems to me that it, there is a big ask here, which is actually unnecessary. And we just have to decide what we care about. If we don't, if, if we don't have a problem with that kind of activity happening in front of the building, fine, let's just say so and move on. If we do, then let's do something about it.
I, I'll answer that. My, my opinion is I don't have a problem with it, the way we've been talking about it, because I think it's limited and it's gonna be small scale.
Okay. I, I would agree with that and I would agree with what Greg mentioned before, because the activity that we're going to see here is going to be more limited than what we used to see when it was occupied by a firehouse. So albeit there was, obviously that's a different operation and a different field.
Yeah, that's a whole different thing.
Public, yeah.
It's a civic use, that's crazy.
Yep, absolutely. But even so, I, I, you know, I, I think the, the site's going to be improved from what we had before with the, the curbing and the plantings that we've had. It's the nature of the beast and I, I don't, you know, with this language, I would take out the word typically and, and go back to the page six language. I don't have a problem with it.
Do you want to put any time restrictions, times of day or length of time during the course of the day?
I don't have a minute to that.
I know.
Summertime hours are different than wear hours.
I, I, I would agree with Tom on that, I'm not so sure it's, it's, it's enforceable and we're just asking for problems and trouble and I don't think we have the manpower or the, the appetite really to do that kind of thing.
Getting the town all entangled in that seems to be, to be inappropriate.
Yeah. Okay, are we, any other questions at this point? Okay, any questions, comments from the public on this application?
Mr. Curley, members of board, how you doing? Bob from Gina Carrera, 302 Southern River Road.
Welcome back.
Yes, year later. And a lot wiser. Okay, we're talking about all kinds of neat stuff here. What I'd like to know is in the last meeting, it was stated for the record that there wasn't gonna be any oversized vehicles in the back. Now we're talking dump trucks and trailers. I'd like to know how they, how they figure on maneuvering a trailer into the back? And will they be loading and unloading the trailer in the back? Last meeting, we go in from three excavators onsite to a front end loader in the, in the information given to you. Now we're talking bobcats and other small equipment. Seems that this, things are, you know, moving quite along very fast with this job. Again, and I also have a question for the town. Did the town notify the owner of Sand Street? Because it is not a town road, it is a, it is a private property specifically to notify them that they are changing, that they are going to change the, the zoning for this area, for the BNS zone. BNS, to BNR zone.
Work, work with him on that.
And also I'd like to say that the proximity of this, of this area is, is in, all the other businesses that were mentioned this evening are in the industrial zone. So please check your zoning. So on the other side of the tracks. Let's see. So I'd like to know how they're gonna load and unload the trailers and turn them around? Are they gonna back them out onto private property and then onto Millwood Road? Which by the way is, is Route 120. Not 133. And that sort of thing.
Yeah, I think, if I could just add to that. The site planning, curbing and landscaping detail that's on this plan right now kind of prohibits a trailer and a truck backing up to pick up a bobcat. It's gonna be really difficult to maneuver all that equipment around and then turn it around and get out. I, I don't, I don't know how they're gonna do this. It's gonna be really tight and constricted.
So Sabrina, was, were the owners of Sand Street property next door notified that you were gonna run all this equipment over the property?
Neighbor notification was sent to all the neighbors as part of submission of this application. All of the information was distributed according to town code.
I'm saying specifically for this use.
Specifically for this use, yes.
I see. And again, that's not public property, that's private. Lakeview Avenue is a, is a dedicated public road.
I have a question about the excavators and the trailers, like how big, what's the size of these, this trailer that these excavators are gonna be loaded on? And what's the size of the truck? You know, he keeps mentioning a landscaping truck and I'm pretty familiar with what a landscaping truck looks like. It's a box truck usually, Mitsubishi or an Isuzu. They're pretty big. They don't really fit in a handicap parking space. Also, does, is Westchester Pavers also going to have this location used by Delamba Masonry? Because I know Brian Lamba is associated also with Delamba Masonry. And according to the website, Westchester Pavers does excavation and construction and Delamba Masonry does concrete and excavation. Our concerns are that this site will become a general contractor's yard and it's zoned to be a BR site. Not an industrial site, not light industrial, it's a BR site. Also, on October 9th, Con Edison was given access through 60 Millwood Road's property to access the town owned parcel of land on Lakeview Avenue, the right of way, for an electrical emergency. It's kind of perplexing that the town would allow 60 Millwood Partners to block access to land that the town owns. Furthermore, the site, the site plan should be modified so that the land bank parking is located in another location on the site so as not to interfere with any future access to the Lakeview Avenue right of way. And I just have one more thing to say. Well, actually, he brought it up about Sand Street. I do hope that Willwood Holdings was notified about this meeting and about this applicant.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Was Willwood notified?
Proper notification was distributed. I, I mean, we do it with every application, particularly for public hearings.
Okay.
No, I thought of one other thing, because I don't know if John is gonna get up and say anything, so I'm gonna say something. The deli that operates across from where Westchester Pavers will be located, perhaps, there is constant traffic in and out of there. This town has never addressed the parking issue and the traffic issue that goes on with the deli traffic. And with all the other traffic on the street with people going to Millwood Supply, to the Garden Center. If they are allowed to use that front door to have trucks pick up an excavator or bobcat or whatever they're calling it, there is gonna be a real bad traffic issue there. And the town needs to look into it. And they need to stop ignoring the fact that there needs to be more municipal parking in the town for things such as that area. Thank you.
Okay.
I'd also like to add, the, the traffic that, that you noticed when the firehouse was there was, was not necessarily due to the firehouse and it was because the area was used for municipal parking. I'd also like to add too, that there seems to be some kind of new math issue here. I'd like to know that, I'd like to know how you could fit a 34 foot building when their frontage is 36 feet? The garage, the garage door that, that was brought up at the last meeting, okay, that Mr. Curley liked so much and Mrs. Seaby thought could do better, is 27 feet. I worked at that location for 13 years as a volunteer firefighter. And the Googled pictures that you see, the stripes out front and the flagpole on the side, I, I assisted in painting. To building yourself, to house, to house a 27 foot door onsite, if you go back, which will be difficult for you to go back to find out, I'd like to know how you could fit a 34 foot building on that piece of property when the frontage on it is 36 feet?
It's existing building, right?
It's existing building, yes.
How could that have been done, is that your question?
Well, I know how, I know how it was done. I'm asking you how it was done. How, how is that to be? The, the distance between the two buildings on the two lots is seven feet.
So let me just ask, so I understand your, your concern. Are you suggesting that it doesn't meet zoning code or?
I'm suggesting that the building, what you see here is not on, is not on the parcel two property.
You're saying it, it goes over the parcel line?
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
Any comments on that?
So would it be, would it be possible, some town engineer out there to possibly measure it?
I think that's a matter of the title company for the owner. We don't, we don't check meets and bounds and something that's already preexisting.
We require a survey as part of the application, which demonstrates as to be on the property it's representing.
I know, but you don't have that information. There was a survey back in, back in 15 and none of the information that you received is based off of a, an actual survey.
The building location hasn't changed, so if it was on the property in 2015, then it's on the property now, nothing has...
I realize that, but if you read the language in the, in the title insurance, a lot isn't covered, the back parking lot isn't covered, parking on the side isn't covered.
So the...
Talking about exceptions to title, because that's different, that's a different issue than whether the building is located on the property.
All I'm asking is that the board go out there and measure the property and please explain to me how that's possible. We realize that the setback would, would give you roughly a, a quarter of the lot size, but it's not, you know, they should have maybe a foot, if that, on the side of the building?
Well, this is, this, this is, if, if there's some problem here, I guess there's, there's, if there is, there's a hiccup in our process here. I don't think it necessarily changes the content of the, of the application other than making sure that this is correct if we are concerned about it. Do we not require an updated, I had, let me just, let me just finish. Do we not require an updated survey with new applications? We do?
I can see...
So there, so there is an updated survey, we weren't relying on the survey from 1950.
Where is that information? Where is the updated survey?
Well, usually most architects, I might want to ask the architect, I know when I worked on survey and engineering, anytime we did the site plan, the first thing we would have, I would ask this gentleman here, is where's the survey? We'd waste the site plan on the survey.
I had to submit a survey, just do the addition on, the updated survey, do the addition on my house.
That's what we always do.
So did I.
So there should be one in the town records, right? This ought to be easy to fix.
The only information that you receive are tax maps. It's all taken off of, off of Newcastle tax maps.
I mean, I can see literally on this plan that's up here on the screen, there are deeded meets and bounds descriptions along the property line. So the property line is as per a survey.
I mean, if it was based on a survey, the architect should always reference the PLS it was taken from, so it avoids this confusion.
Well, the question is, it's not the meets and bounds, the question is, is the building located where that drawing says it is, right?
I think licenses would be at stake here if it wasn't.
Well...
Who's license? There's no stamped drawings in front of you.
I'm looking at a stamped drawing.
Stamped, I'm on text. All right, I didn't see that one.
There's no independence, there's no survey drawing per se though, in this, in the submission package.
If you would like me to show you some information, showing the front lot line and so on and so forth.
Are you an architect or an engineer or surveyor?
Uh, no, I'm going off of, I'm going off of the same information that you were given, tax maps and so on and so forth and building length.
I think if, it seems to me this could be a legitimate concern and it seems to me that this is an administrative matter for staff to report back to us on and see what this is all about. Bob, I don't think it affects necessarily what we're doing right now tonight unless we propose to approve a resolution. And maybe in that case, it could be conditional on making sure...
Have the applicant provide an updated property lines survey.
That can be a condition of your approval. Or a condition prior to signing of the plot.
Okay.
Thank you.
Again, I would like to, I'd rather somebody just go out there and measure it.
Well, measuring it is one thing, but figuring out where the imaginary theoretical mathematical lines are is another thing, which is the responsibility of a land surveyor, so I can't do that.
And we typically, as you well know, I'm sure, ask the applicant to make sure they provide those documents. So they would have a licensed surveyor sign off on it.
Well, again, the property were surveyed in, in 2015 and...
2015, I thought you said 19, I said 1915 because it was, the building's so old.
It's okay.
No, actually, when you go to, and when you go to the county, the only survey that you'll find for lots one, two and three are lots one, which is, you know, pretty much the only lot that, that conforms.
Well, I think we just need to square this up.
Thank you very much.
Can the applicant help us with, with regard to, just describe some of the turning radii in the back and where you proposed to put the trailers and the size of trailers and size of trucks?
Yeah, and I can first just state, the, a survey was done in 2015, we have no problem with a contingency in the resolution stating that the building is on the property. We have no problem with a contingency in the resolution stating that the building is on the property. The building is on the property.
And do we have that survey?
You know, I'm not sure if it was, had been submitted, but if not, we can certainly provide-
Part of the previous, see the meets and bounds.
We can provide a survey stamped, New York State Licensed Surveyor, that shows the location of the building and-
Okay, we would like that.
That will do it.
The meets and bounds are on the, on the drawings provided.
Yes, yeah.
The building shown on our drawings was based on the survey.
Okay, great.
In terms of the trucks, by eliminating the dumpster, first of all, the, the trailers are very small. They can fit in a parking space, which I've said numerous times.
So, they're about ten feet, ten foot, twelve foot?
About fifteen feet.
I didn't hear that numerous times today, but I wasn't at the last meeting.
Everything, the trailers, the trucks, everything fits in a nine-foot by eighteen-foot parking space.
Okay, but detached, so the trailers are detached?
Correct.
And parked in a standard piece that would fit a car?
Correct.
Okay. And the same with the trucks?
Correct.
So, there, it's not like you're parking dump trucks?
Correct.
Okay.
I don't want to get into definition of dump trucks. When does a truck become a dump truck?
Well, it depends on how people take care of their trucks, sometimes.
It fits in a parking spot. And by eliminating the, the refuse area here, we actually have a fair amount of paved area to allow trucks to maneuver, both pull in here, back in, and then come out for a three-point turn.
Do you put a turning radius on that so we can see?
Yeah, we could show with it, with a trailer.
People's concerns?
Or we can pull in this way and then back the trailer in here and then pull out that way. So, you can do the three-point turn in either direction. Was there any other question? Hoping for some clarification.
We'll probably wait until you sit down.
I think built into the resolution, we have, you know, prohibitions in terms of that this will be just for storage of these materials and these tools. And I presume that the building inspector has looked at the proposed activity and says it conforms with, with the zoning?
Yes, you have a letter from the building inspector, which provides an interpretation of this particular use in this particular zoning district.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, the, the applicant, to the applicant's credit, they did come in and asked for an interpretation by the building inspector before the application even came before you, because it was a different use than you had previously examined.
Right.
So.
Okay, good. All right, any other questions, comments? Any questions or comments from board members? If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I have, have a question. Jennifer, wait. It was mentioned that Con Ed has a right-of-way to go in. I don't understand what that was all about.
Con Ed's property is directly behind this property. There's wires.
Oh, so to the, to the left?
To the-
Right. Oh, yeah, it's up, that's right, it's up to the right.
We walked across that.
Yeah, okay.
Two, three years ago.
Okay, good.
Up here.
Okay.
Yes. Yep. Do we have a second? Okay, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have a draft resolution before us, but we have some changes, I think, that we want to incorporate into that draft resolution. First, I think we want a condition about the receiving of a survey. And we wanted to change, I think, that language in the bullets on pages four and six with regard to-
It's item five on page six.
Yeah, I think item five on page six is what we like better than the bullet on page four, lines twenty-five through twenty-nine. Very similar, but I think the language in bullet five is better. Is everyone okay with that?
Yes.
I have a comment, if I may, on-
Sure.
Page six. It's item three. Oh, this is about lighting? Says lighting fixtures in the parking lot shall be-
Goodness, it's catching that fast.
Does that go in the minutes? No, it, it says here that lighting fixtures in the parking lot shall be turned off from dusk to dawn. So, why are they?
There.
Why, why are we asking them to, why are they putting lights in at all if we're not going to use them? Is there, what's, what's the nature? Is this, is this language right or is it?
This was a language you included in the last application to be cognizant of the neighbors who resided in the area.
And that was a different activity, though.
It was a different activity, so.
So, why would one have lights if they can't use them?
So speak amongst yourself. That question's for you, board.
I mean, in the wintertime, in the wintertime, they need lights during their business operation hours, which go till six o'clock, I think.
Yeah.
So, so the language doesn't reflect their, their, their business operations during the winter months.
Can we voluntarily address this potentially? We would be happy saying that the lights will be turned off after seven PM at the latest, but that would give a little bit of a shoulder time there where if somebody's working late, they can safely leave the site without being hurt.
I have no problem with that.
What about the, the dawn hour?
In the winter-
When do you start?
In the wintertime. You guys start work early at-
Seven, six-thirty, how about six-thirty? Six-thirty.
Seven PM to six-thirty.
Oh, six-thirty, oh, yeah.
Six-thirty, okay, yeah.
What time do we normally have for industrial or commercial activity? Is it seven?
This is a commercial activity.
Pardon me?
It is a commercial activity. And I don't know the hour offhand. I think the code says seven, seven AM.
Yeah. I think you have to go with seven AM to seven PM, except for lighting on the building, I guess.
I think that's right.
Yes, there has to be some sort of safety.
Some lighting there, correct?
Correct.
Security lighting.
Okay, for security.
And we can clarify this to the lighting in the parking lot.
Yes.
And it, lighting fixtures in the parking lot shall be turned or shall-
Be off from seven PM to seven AM.
This is not referring to lighting on the building?
Yeah.
Correct.
Just the parking lot.
That was my only comment.
I have a question on page one.
Page one?
Page one, line forty-one, where the site is described as a parcel of one point two five acres, but it's listed on the plans as thirty-three thousand and change square feet, which is less than one point two five acres. So, there's a disconnect there.
The building is seventy-four sixty-two, someone says?
Yes.
It actually says-
It's on a parcel of one point two five.
Parcel is thirty-three thousand, six hundred and seventy-three square feet.
Oh.
What is that again?
Existing area of lot, thirty-three thousand, six hundred and, well, rounded up, six hundred and seventy-four square feet, so.
No way, it's one, one-two-five.
There's, it can't be one point two five acres.
One, seven, seven.
So, I don't know if that can be clarified with the survey.
Well, the survey should have.
Yeah.
The survey will have the right.
Okay, so we need the survey for that, too, for-
And then, would we, were we going to add in something about the planning board retaining jurisdiction?
We discussed that briefly.
I, I don't see a need for it myself, but I don't know if others do.
I'm on the fence about it, I don't.
Does it hurt?
Does it hurt?
I don't think it hurts, but just one more condition. I'm not even sure what that means. What sort of enforcement arm does the planning board have?
Well, we were talking about it with regard, for example, to the use of the roll-up front door, that if the planning board retained jurisdiction on that and if there were complaints, it might be something that would have to come back to the planning board for resolution. If we're not, if we're no longer concerned about it, then-
We could retract the-
The approval?
The approval for that particular condition.
Yeah, but I'm not sure that's any different than being, getting a violation and then they either have to change their way they operate if they're in violation or they have to come back to you anyway to amend.
If they go to court, and the court will send them back to you.
I, I, I'm not sure it makes any-
Yeah. One thing we could do, if you wish, is, we've done this in the past, is set up some sort of period of time where we just revisit, just have the applicant come in and just say, we're using the doors as we said we would.
You, you would need to specify the type of application materials, that whole, because there's a whole administrative procedural process that each applicant has to go through in order to get before you.
I would, I would suggest we would do that if there's a complaint that can't be reconciled or something like that.
Okay.
So, no need to do it at this point?
Hey, that would be my take.
Okay. All right, we go with it?
Go with that.
Okay. So, I would say we wouldn't do anything at this point.
Yeah.
Okay, if we have problems, we have problems, we'll see. Okay, were there any other changes that we wanted to see?
We wanted to see the turning radius on the plan.
Yes.
Well, you need to scale, turning radius, there's a few little things.
Yep, that would be a condition, yes. Thank you, Jennifer. Okay, with those changes, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, very good, thank you.
Sorry, before, who seconded? You didn't do your, uh, secret before you did the resolution.
So, we should back up?
Yep. Rescind the approval, yep.
Yeah, right.
Motion to rescind.
Okay, is there a motion to rescind?
Motion to rescind.
Second?
That was Greg.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Aye. So, we have before us the full environmental assessment form. Is there a motion to adopt the full environmental assessment form?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And again, we go back to the resolution as amended.
And so, you just adopted the environmental assessment form? Did you mean by adopting a negative declaration? So, we should probably make that clear. So, I thought you were just adopting part two of the environmental assessment form, and then there's part three that has your secret determination of significance. And there's a narrative that's been prepared with all of the reasons for why this does not create a significant adverse environmental impact.
You're a rookie.
Every time I come here, it's new.
Did you post a public hearing?
It's an aging thing.
We did, actually.
We did that.
We did that. Who, who did it? Do you, do you get it?
I was prodded, but I did it.
Okay, so then, did you make the determination?
A lot of things happen underneath the dais here, by the way.
So, you've adopted part two, now a motion to adopt a negative declaration, if that is-
We have such a motion.
So moved.
Second?
I'm staying out of this.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now. Can we adopt the, the amended resolution?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Limped through to the conclusion. Okay.
Lot of moves.
Yes. Thank you very much.
You bet.
We come now to our next item, and this is an informal hearing for a new application. This is the Yeshiva Farm Settlement, a cemetery building, application for a site development plan amendment and stormwater pollution prevention plan, two hundred and twenty, Croton Lake Road.
Good evening. My name is Theodore Strauss. I'm the architect for Yeshiva. This building that we're proposing before you this evening is a small building located adjacent to the existing cemetery, the purpose of which is to provide a protected space for mourners who have come for a funeral and those that have come to honor their past relatives. In addition to which, we are providing facilities for men and women as part of this overall facility. We have to date received approval from the Health Department and New York, New York State Department of, of Public Works for this project. I was handed this evening some comments from the town engineer, which we will be responding to immediately. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have in regard to this facility.
Okay, thank you very much. Sabrina, you had some comments?
I did.
Did you get Sabrina's comments also?
I have a copy, I received it this evening, yes.
Thank you.
Hang on a second, let me find it right here.
Want my copy?
I have it.
What a gentleman.
Thank you very much. In general, we kind of need to pull some, some specific information together on the application. There, you know, when we tried to locate the area of the site plan, there's a wireless facility in proximity to the cemetery. We needed a better sense of where, in the site plan, of where the building is located with existing structures on the property. So, we asked that you kind of do a better job of identifying the location of this on the property. Sure?
There was submitted an overall site plan of the property, which designates exactly where this is. It's in a very remote area of the entire property. And from this whole cemetery area, nothing else is visible in terms of residences or schools that are on the property. It is extremely remote and isolated in and of itself. And I have a copy of that with me if you want to see it.
I mean, it was old, topo, many, many years ago. So, I would still recommend that they come up with a better location map. And it's, Helen and I were looking at it, along with Sabrina, and it was very difficult to find out where exactly this site was. And with all due respect, we just couldn't figure out where it was, based on the area itself.
I will call you tomorrow morning, and we will set up a meeting and review this so that you're clear.
Well, next week, I think, Helen and Sabrina might walk it, so I mean, if you want to be there to get a better understanding.
Absolutely.
Yeah, you know, the, the proper, the proper parcel ID number should be submitted on the plans. You know, it was on, given that we couldn't really locate this, we wanted to make sure we had the proper parcel IDs. That needs to be addressed. There's a short form EAF that was submitted, but in order to determine the type of action this is, we really need to understand the amount of disturbance that will occur to build the structure that you're talking about. You know, and we need to understand how much disturbance for this septic system that's being put in and the parking, whether it's, it was hard to determine whether it's existing parking or new parking. And we just needed some more information regarding the size of the building in relation to the area of disturbance to confirm floor area ratio, existing development that occurs on that parcel for coverage analysis.
It is on the drawings, and I will be glad to review it with you as soon as we meet.
Okay. And minimum setbacks need to be determined based on where this is located. I don't think that there's any issues, but we just can't verify.
Good. Sounds like a meeting and some revisions will be, gets a long way into this.
Just so there's a clarity with the board. This is an area which is a very large tract of land. And within this tract of land are a number of private residences that belong to the Yeshiva, as well as educational facilities. And this remote area, which is a cemetery and has been, and this is an accommodating facility, which they want to incorporate within the, the cemetery area itself.
Yep, terrific, okay.
Yeah, and there's one, one measurement, that's the only measurement I see, is the hundred and twenty-eight feet from Croton Lake Road.
Correct.
And that, and that's without the terrain features, and so it's, I'm sure, as I recollect, I've driven past that property many times, and I know the buildings are up high and the road is down low, closer to the lake, which is even lower, the reservoir. So, it's probably hard to see this new building, but we don't have that information.
Correct.
So, it would be good to make sure that we have a line of sight, you know, a slice, which says, here's the building. You go down the hill, here's the road, you have all the trees, you know, that-
Yes, it is, it is a very heavily watered area.
It is, but when I drive along, I can see several houses and things like that. So, it's, the trees are, you know, generally very dense, but not totally. So, I would like a line of sight drawing, you know, so that from the rooftop to the road, it's not visible, which I believe it won't be, but-
Absolutely will not.
I'd just like to have the record replete and complete.
And then you have the town engineer's memo as well.
Yes, I do.
So, again, a joint meeting would be very helpful, I think, to, you know, work these, these various details out and get some good drawings in, and we'll be all set, move this forward. Okay? So, I don't know when you want to do this or what's scheduled for an informal.
We will reach out to, to Mr. Strauss and coordinate with him.
And then we'll schedule it, continue it informal.
Correct. We, we need to continue the informal, get some more materials to you and move on.
Very good, okay.
But overall, there's a lot of useful information in here. But overall, there's a lot of useful information in here, and, and I think that what we're talking about is something that can be done fairly easily, and it unfortunately takes up some calendar time.
I think the most, one of the most critical elements was the, uh, the field work and the, the design of the septic system, which has been passed by the, uh, by the Westchester County Board of Health, as well as, uh, the New York State approval.
Yes, the, I think, uh, Bob Cioli had a question about, uh, replacement of the, uh, subterranean, uh, percolation systems for stormwater.
In relation to the septic system?
Yes, has that been resolved?
As I, as I mentioned earlier, I just received these comments this evening when I walked in the door.
Fair enough, fair enough, fair enough. But there is that one, and that's probably his major concern. And so you'll have to take a look at that one carefully, and I'm sure you will.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Okay, we have some minutes. We tried these minutes last time. Didn't have sufficient number of folks here. So we have the July first, um, believe it or not, 2014 minutes.
Yeah, I've been waiting four years to make directions, son.
Well, you missed the other meeting. We did several of these from-
And I wasn't here in fourteen.
I think most of them was there this, this century, but, uh, they were a number that we were using to catch up. So we have, uh, July first, 2014. Any, um, let's see. Dick Schill and I can comment. Tom wasn't here and-
I definitely wasn't here.
He wasn't born yet.
He's just a, a young planning board guy in his diapers right at home.
Watching on TV.
Training at home. Okay. Any changes?
I have a suggestion. It's not a change. It's on page six. Page, at line forty-eight. And since, you know, my English instruction was probably in school, started, you know, over sixty-five years ago, it's probably different than all of your other folks, except for one. And I like farther when you talk about distance as opposed to further. But that's just a suggestion. It's not, it's not even a request.
I always have issues with that.
Farther is distance, yeah. These days, you're lucky. I believe the dictionaries tend to say it's one and the same.
It's one of the drills from the log cabin years.
Yes.
Try some new math. Okay?
Yeah.
Try that new math, right?
Okay, I have, uh, I left the page eleven.